And I'm going to call the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners' November Meeting to order, and if we would all rise please. Heavenly Father, at this time of Thanksgiving, we are thankful for so many blessings. We are thankful for a country in which we can vote. We are thankful for friends. We are thankful for family. We are thankful for the bounty that we share and are able to share. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Bonnie, will you call the roll?
Lathrup, Kropa?
Yes.
Wheelock, Klaus?
Here.
Crawford, Johnson?
Yes, here.
Maxbauer?
Here. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, they will stand approved. This is our first opportunity for public comment. Bonnie, would you read the rolls, please?
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act as amended. Public comments shall be carried out in accordance with the following Board rules and procedures. A: Any person wishing to address the Board shall state his or her name and address. B: No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. Chairperson may, at his or her discretion, extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak.
Would anyone like to make public comment?
Ross Richardson, 10675 Candleton in Traverse City. I'm here to discuss the pool and the deal you have, or you're in the process of cutting with the YMCA. And honestly, I have to agree with your county administrator, Mr. Menzel, that this is a really bad deal for the county and the citizens of the county. I don't understand why you're so hot on it. I looked over the documents that you had in your packet from last week's Ways and Means Meeting and the proposed business plans. In the proposed business plans, you completely ignored the loss of revenue that the pool generates right now for the county. Last year, the pool generated $316,000 in revenue for the county, which was by far the biggest revenue producer, you know, on the Civic Center grounds. And you're basically giving all that away when you make your deal with the YMCA. And plus that, you're also going to be giving YMCA another $50,000 on top of that. So in terms of, it's a little tricky exactly figuring out the revenue versus expenditures and so forth, but what it boils down to by my calculation, because you don't save, you don't save all your pool expenses. It's a little over $300,000 budgeted. You're going to save maybe $125,000 to $150,000 of that. But if you take that revenue that you're losing, plus the $50,000 against the savings you're going to make, mostly on your part-time lifeguards, it's still going to cost you $150,000 more, you know, to run the pool. On top of that, and again, I do not have, I do not have the hard numbers. I don't know what your fees were before, you know, before you closed the pool. But I think it's safe to assume that the fees that YMCA is going to charge are higher than the fees that, you know, were paid previously. So it's sort of a twofer. On the one hand, you're costing the taxpayers $150,000 or more every year to keep the pool open. And at the same time, you're costing the residents more money than they're paying right now. I don't understand why you would go down that road. And you're still keeping all the liability, maintenance, and so forth with the pool. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I will move on to approval of the agenda. I have one addition. It is the life and disability insurance renewal with Lincoln Financial, and I will put that under new business item number one. Are there any other additions, changes, deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Move.
Support.
Support.
Moved by Dr. Johnson, supported by Commissioner Kropa. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Bonnie, it is your turn.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, received and filed or approval, is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. A: Received and filed. Number one, Bay County Resolution opposing extension of disastrous trade policies. Number two, Bay County Resolution opposing use of skylanterns. Number three, Bay County Resolution supporting Senate Bill 437 and Senate Bill 438. Number four, Board of Public Works Finance Committee minutes of August 4th. Number five, Board of Public Works minutes of September 10th. Number six, Planning Commission minutes of September 15th. Number seven, Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency minutes of September 17th. Number eight, Northwestern Regional Airport Commission minutes of September 29th. Number nine, Brown Field Redevelopment Authority minutes of September 30th. Number 10, Board of Public Works minutes of October 8th. Number 11, Central Dispatch Board of Directors minutes of October 15th. Number 12, Northern Lakes Community Mental Health minutes of October 15th. Approvals. The Public Health and Safety Committee recommends approval of the following. Number 13, Jail Food Service Contract with Aramark. Number 14, Transfer of fiduciary responsibilities for TNT. Number 15, Central Dispatch Bylaws. The Resource Management and Administration Committee recommends approval of the following. Number 16, Michigan Drug Court Grant Funding, 86 District Court. Number 17, Commission on Aging Grant Funding to outside agencies. Number 18, Commission on Aging 2016 Millet Propositions. Number 19, Commission on Aging Approval of Strategic Plan. Number 20, Appointments to Boards and Committees. The Ways and Means Committee recommends approval of the following. Number 21, Non-Community Water Supply Renewal Agreement. Number 22, Health Department Dental Services Agreement, Amendment Number 18. Number 23, Child and Adolescent Health Center Grant Agreement, Kingsley. Number 24, Child and Adolescent Health Center Grant Agreement, Youth Health and Wellness Center. Number 25, Academic Affiliation Agreement with Davenport University. Number 26, Memorandum of Understanding with Munson Medical Center Regarding Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner Training. Number 27, Voicemail System Replacement, Boardman Avenue Site. Number 28, Management of Easling Pool by YMCA. Number 29, Boardman River Dam's Work Authorizations Number Three and Number Four. Number 30, Budget Adjustments. Number 31, Conservation Resource Alliance Invoice. Number 32, Deputy County Administrator. Number 33, Elimination of Building Authority Per diem Compensation. Number 34, Health Benefits for County Surveyor and Drain Commissioner.
Would any member of the public like any item removed from the consent calendar? Seeing none, any Commissioner? Commissioner Klaus?
Twenty-eight.
Number twenty-eight. Staff? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item number twenty-eight.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Johnson, supported by Commissioner Klaus. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next on our agenda is special orders of business. Proclamation honoring Conflict Resolution Services 25th Anniversary. Who is going to handle that? Anyone?
Please, come up and introduce yourself. My name is Rebecca Garland. I am the Director of Conflict Resolution Services here in Traverse City, Michigan. And we had asked the commission to review and sign a proclamation for the center's 25th anniversary that we celebrated actually July 1st of this year. We've been providing services not only to Grand Traverse but also to Leland, Antrim, Benzie, Wexford, and Mesaki Counties for those 25 years. We're very grateful for the support that we've received, not just from our local community, but also from the various places where our offices have been, which have included church basements, people's homes, Third Level Crisis Center, the use of some of the courthouse conference rooms and so forth. And we are just very grateful for that support and that the commission this evening has agreed to present us with a proclamation recognizing our 25th anniversary.
It's on page 116.
I'm going there. Give me a minute. You know, there really ought to be a...
If you open it in iBooks.
Well, I don't open it in iBooks. Let's not go there.
Can you help us resolve this conflict?
I could. It would take a while, and I'd bill hourly.
114, 115. Oh, no, I can do it.
Just so you know that, so we're not going to get far.
And I have heard rumors about this commission, so, you know.
All right. I am going to read the proclamation. Now that I have it on page 116. Whereas conflict resolution is a way of people solving individual disputes, as well as a means toward creating a more peaceful community; and whereas our citizens possess the moral authority and power to resolve conflicts on their own; and whereas the conflict resolution process empowers all individuals, families, communities, schools, businesses, and organizations to foster communication and devise solutions that are acceptable to the needs and interests of all the parties involved; and whereas Conflict Resolution Services, Inc., was the idea of Tom and Darlene Shea and other like-minded individuals to offer an alternative dispute resolution process to the individuals, families, schools, businesses, and organizations in Grand Traverse, Antrim, Benzie, Lelandau, Mesaki, and Wexford Counties; and whereas community-based volunteers trained in conflict resolution are the backbone of this program, these trained volunteer mediators provide mediation, facilitation, and conciliation when asked by their peers or ordered by the court; and whereas these volunteers, serving as mediators, provide low-cost, quality service that can strengthen and restore relationships by relieving parties and courts of costly litigation, resulting in less time involved to reach a mutually satisfactory solution rather than an order imposed on them by a third party; and whereas Conflict Resolution Services, Inc., was incorporated on July 1st, 1990, and is celebrating its 25th anniversary in 2015; and whereas Michigan Public Act of 260 of 1988, known as the Community Dispute Resolution Act, authorized the establishment of community dispute resolution centers throughout the state of Michigan, of which Conflict Resolution Services, Inc. is one of these centers; and, uh, my thing just disappeared. You know, sometimes technology, I was on a roll, too. Hang in there. Okay.
Let me finish.
Please.
And now therefore be resolved that the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners commends Conflict Resolution Services, Inc. for celebrating 25 years of providing mediation, arbitration, facilitation, and training services for Grand Traverse County; and be it further resolved that the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners recognizes the dedication and hard work demonstrated by the Board of Directors, volunteer mediators, and staff of Conflict Resolution Services for the accomplishments that made this 25th anniversary possible; and be it further resolved that the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners thus hereby proclaim December 10th, 2015, as Conflict Resolution Services, Inc. Day in the County of Grand Traverse, Michigan. We encourage all citizens to acknowledge the value of conflict resolution through mediation, facilitation, and conciliation, and encourage use of this form of dispute resolution, and to get involved and to support Conflict Resolution Services, Inc.
Okay. I would move to accept the Conflict Resolution Services 25th Anniversary Proclamation. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Dr. Johnson. Discussion?
How many volunteers you have?
We have 50, well, actually 61 active volunteers between our mediators and also our Board of Directors, who provide well over 500 to 600 hours every year, and we waive approximately $3,000 to $4,000 in fees every year for folks who are not able to pay the administrative fee for their mediation process.
Nice.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution in support of naming the Traverse City Veterans Administration Clinic in honor of Demus T. Crawl.
And there's no one here, so I can probably talk about it, since we moved it for Tuesday. What this is for is basically to try to rename the current VA facility. You know, they came before to ask about the new one to be named that. Well, I think they've come to the conclusion that it might be easier if we name the current one, get it renamed, so that when the new one comes on, the name will transfer. So that, this resolution is just, and I can read it, just, "Resolution in support of naming the Traverse City Veterans Administration Clinic in honor of Demus T. Crawl. Whereas Demus T. Crawl was born in Long Lake Township in Grand Traverse County; and whereas Colonel Crawl was awarded several medals and decorations for his service, including both World War, World War I and World War II victory medals, a Purple Heart and Medal of Honor; and whereas the citizens of the area wish to honor Colonel Crawl by renaming the current Traverse City VA outpatient clinic, and upon building a new clinic transferring this name to become the following, the Colonel Demus T. Crawl VA Outpatient Clinic. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of Commissioners that Grand Traverse County support the naming of the Traverse City Veterans Administration Clinic in honor of Medal of Honor recipient Demus T. Crawl."
All right. I'll make the motion.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Kropa, supported by Dr. Johnson. Discussion?
And part of that is, you know, Traverse City's a Coast Guard city. There's very few of those, and that this community really supports veterans wholeheartedly. So this is just a natural step to, instead of just having the VA clinic, at least have it named after somebody local, so.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is Mr. Peacock.
Thank you for having me back. My name is Steve Peacock. As Commissioner Maxbauer indicated, I'm here to give you an update and basically the final conclusions on our independent financial analysis. From the last time I was here, there were three items that were open for us to wrap up, and those are completed in the report that you see in front of you. We just got the final report for the OPEB this morning, so this is hot off the press. It is issued in draft format, because I didn't have time to put it into final format, honestly, after I got the report. So if you agree with this, this will be finalized. There's one question I have for the board. It doesn't need to be answered today, but it would need to be answered at some point before we go final. There is a tremendous amount of data that is behind this analysis. The Municast software, for example, I by mistake printed it in my office. It's 1,100 pages long. So I don't think you're going to want all 1,100 pages, but if you do, I'm more than happy to put it in here. And then you've got some additional OPEB and MIPS or MERS liability analysis reports that have also been completed, that I'm more than happy to include those, but if the board can give that some consideration and then give me some direction as to which way they would like me to go, I'm happy to do so. All right. The other item that, first item that was open was a question from Commissioner with respect to 2017's budget, as the revenue, as to why the budget was down so low as compared to 2015. I believe we spoke about this. The last time I was here, we addressed the 2016 budget. Well, it's the same attributes that are also causing a reduction in the 2017 budget. There was a transfer in the budget for about $700,000 for use of fund balance that is not going to be considered in 2017 under this analysis. About $625,000 in convention facility and liquor tax, which we also spoke about last time I was here. And then there will be no revenue share money in the budget for 2017 that there was in 2015. So those are the same three attributes that affect the '16 revenue stream that also affect the '17 revenue stream. And then you'll see in '18, the revenue starts to come more in line with what it was for 2015 rolling forward. Next up was the two items that were left. One was the OPEB liability for the health insurance plan that the county currently offered its employees. That analysis is in this document. It is in the very last page of this document. And luckily, this does include the motion, or the amendment to the plan that was made by the board earlier to cut the benefit to $100 per person. So they were able to get that change made into this Gatsby 45 report. So what you see, if you look under 2015, the present value of the benefits is 9.7 million, almost $9.8 million. The actuarially accrued liability is $7.3 million. And that is almost the same as what you had in your financial statements. For the 2014 year, there was $7,322,000, but that actuarial study was done in 2012. So the point I want to make here is that the one that was in your financial statement was as of 2012. This is as of 2015. Your liability has not changed. That's good news, but you also carved and changed the benefit to the $100 per person for the non-union employees. Okay? Had you not have done that, this liability would have gone in excess of $9 million. So you have, in fact, saved by making that change to this plan, you've cut out $2 million with respect to that liability. I believe the county is going to consider further amendments to that plan as labor negotiations continue, which could certainly reduce the liability on that as changes are made going The second item on here is, if you go back, go past the spreadsheet that has all the colors at the top, and you're going to look into an Excel spreadsheet. The board asked us to have MERS can prepare an analysis changing the system multiple from 2.5 down to 1.0. If you go across the columns on the left, one says 5/20/15, 9/3/15, 11/19, 11/19, 11/19, and unfunded current benefits, unfunded frozen, unfunded termination. What this means is, is the cost per year to the MERS plan is under the totals, so under the May actuary report, it was $4,782.30. 9/3 of 2015, which was the report that was generated to amortize this liability over 13 years, you ended up at $4.8 million. Under the new MERS report that just came out, the actuarial amount determined to be paid in 2017 would be $5,411,000 as-is. That's if your benefits stay as-is.
That's the payment, right?
That is correct. Monthly, yeah, that's correct. That's the annual payment. The next column is if you leave the multiple at 1.0 and you freeze the final annual compensation. Okay? That takes your exposure down to $4.658 million. And then on the right, the next column over is if there's a termination, still at 1% of the final actuarial compensation, 4.957. It's safe to say that the second column under the 11/19/2015 is going to be the biggest bang for the buck for the county. However, efforts would have to begin underway, working with MERS, to get that plan in line to what they're proposing now. So you'd have to change the multiple to 1.0 and then have the frozen FAC implemented into the plan. The three columns on the right are your actuarially determined liability, the overall gross liability, and this is as of 12/31/15. Unfunded current benefits on this pension plan are 51,105,000. If you freeze it, if you make the multiple 1.0 and freeze it for the final actuarial compensation, your liability goes down to 46.2 million. And if you have the unfunded liability for the termination, again, at 1% of final annual compensation, that gets you to 49.6 million. So that was information the board wanted, was what would happen to MERS if these certain events were to take place. This gives you an analysis here as to what MERS would do with respect to that. Move would now be in the board's court to decide what's going to happen with this plan.
Dr. Johnson?
So am I right in reading this, that right now our current, at the end of the year, is 51 million?
Correct.
Unfunded?
Correct.
So that's even gone up more than...
Yeah.
And can you explain the frozen, what that does?
Basically, that freezes the MERS plan at 1% for services after 1/116.
Okay.
Freezes the plan. It also, your final annual compensation that's used to determine your pension benefit is also frozen.
So anyone that retires after the first year, theoretically would have a little different multiplier. Is that correct?
For your, for time of service after 1/116. If that's the date, that's correct.
Yep.
From what I understand, it would be in subsequent years. You couldn't take back the formula, so it would have to be going forward.
Right.
The other issue is, we would have to renegotiate these in all of the contracts, and, you know, so it isn't going to be very quickly done.
No.
It will take a while to get there.
Right.
And some real tough situations, you know.
Yeah, and I believe the board was looking for options. So this is an option within MERS that you would have. I would also caution the board that MERS is in the process of changing actuarial assumptions. So what we're talking about today could change tomorrow.
I'm guessing that the error is not going to be made in our favor.
I would guess probably not, but I don't have a crystal ball. I think they're going to reduce their...
They currently use an 8% number. Everyone knows 5% is more realistic, which changes everything and makes that $51 million look a lot worse.
Correct.
Is that what they're, I've been told that's what they're going to do, is they're going to give a 5% number as compared to the 8. Is that what you're speaking or alluding to?
No. What I'm hearing is 5 points, or 7.75. They're taking it down a quarter point.
No, it's, it still impacts it, you know, a little more realistic.
Yeah, it needs to get down. I agree with you, somewhere near the 5% range.
So that's what they're, unless you want to get in high-risk investments, you're going to lose it all getting hedge funds or something.
Correct. So the 2015 actuary report will have those new assumptions in it, and they're going to roll those out over the subsequent five years. So where this report goes for 2015, I just, we just don't know yet. We won't know until that's done in '15.
Commissioner Kropa?
So if we were to not make any changes, which it sounds like it takes a while to work on changes anyways, the annual payment of $5.4 million, that is based on a $51 million debt, how long, I mean, when you look at the MERS payments on here, the next page, we have a $5.2 million contribution for 2015, and then it goes up from there.
Correct.
I'm not seeing the number that's in here, the 11/19 number, the current number that we're assuming would be our payment. I guess I'm just not seeing it match on the page after that.
Okay. It's a good observation. What happened here is the, what you're seeing, this page here, the MERS page, was a report that was delivered in September.
Okay.
Okay, so this, as more information becomes updated to MERS, this is going, one of those things that are going to change.
So our assumed payment changed by $200,000 or so just since September.
Correct.
And regardless if we make one of these changes or not, we can assume they're going to go up as they are on this.
That is correct.
Now, on the spreadsheet that you have for us, on the first page where you have revenues and then expenditures.
Yes.
Line item 01 personnel, I'm assuming includes these things.
Correct.
OPEB payment.
Yep.
MERS payment. MERS payment.
Yep.
So when you look at the 2016, since that's what we're discussing now.
Mm-hmm.
Does the 2016 include some kind of payment above the 5.4 million?
Yes. We increased that by 100.
It was a guess?
Well, we increased your payments by $140,000. So that was going to cover the OPEB and the increased MERS. So it's the best guess we have at this point.
Okay, so in the 2016 personnel expenditures, we have $22,00612. That includes the payment to the OPEB. That includes the higher MERS payment based on the new numbers.
That's correct.
And that also takes into account the resolutions that were passed two weeks ago.
Correct.
For changes.
That is correct. So you'll notice your 2016, if you look at the previous report, went up by about $140,000. So that deficit now is at $3.6 million for the 16 fiscal year, 4.1 for '17, and so forth.
So when we look at the projected deficits here, as the spreadsheet goes on, each one of those years are taking into account the higher MERS number, the higher OPEB number.
Yep, yep, absolutely. Because the, what the OPEB liability, they gave us a snapshot for a date, so we've increased that by 5% per year rolling forward. MERS gave us the exact number, and we can roll from that date forward as well.
But MERS actuariales aren't in, so really, it isn't an exact number.
We're using the 9, the September MERS actuarial study that was done to amortize this over 13 years.
So we could see an increase in that?
Yes, you could.
And that would be an increase that we would find out about at what time?
You already know what your pension payment's going to be for '16.
Okay.
The one that would come out in early '16 would be for '17.
Okay.
But the bright side is by...
There's a bright side?
2028, actually by 2029, we really climbed down the hill. We fall, 2028, we're only 7.5 million in the hole, and '29 is 2.8 as far as the budget.
So the peak of the payment acceleration is 2026, according to MERS chart.
Correct.
That shows an annual payment of $8.7 million for our debt.
Yep, $8.8 million for the 2020 year.
But those numbers are more because it's already more for 2015 as we're looking on it.
Correct.
So we hit the peak here at 2026 with somewhere in a $10 million payment or under. And then after that, we start, obviously, going over the hump and...
Right. That's when the plan becomes fully funded. At that point, you're not paying for the unfunded portion.
Well, it says in 2026, it will be 80% funded by the time we reach that time that we're making an almost $10 million a year payment.
That is correct. I'm sorry, you're right.
So it's not fully funded?
It's not, no, it is operational, fully funded at 80%. But it is, it gets the unfunded liability down to within 20%.
We have 100% funding by 2039.
Correct.
Almost a third of the budget.
Yeah.
Or if we had a $40 million, almost a quarter of the budget would go right to...
According to this chart, and then we know that this chart is under-valued, and the actuariales would change many times by 2026 or 2039.
Absolutely. Yeah. What you're really hoping for is superb investment performance to get that liability down, but, I mean, that's...
Us and everybody across the country.
Yeah, us and everybody else, exactly.
So we can't get MERS to make a more realistic return rate. So we can factor in a more realistic return rate ourself and make accelerated payments based on the differences that we see. They may base it at 8%, but we can make a payment based on 5%.
You can always make additional payments to MERS. That is correct.
That would jump it up quite a bit, I think, the 3% difference.
But if we continue to get an average of 5% per year afterwards, then what... I mean, I think everybody was really excited because we got 6% this year. But, I mean, these numbers and charts are based on an 8% return, or 7.75, which is what I had read.
Right.
For the new projections. So when you look at that, if we continue to only get 4, 5, 6, even 7%, we're still under, okay.
Losing ground.
The other side of the plan...
You're still moving backwards when you're trying to move forwards.
Well, that, yeah, that's on the revenue side. Keep in mind that there's also expenses in the plan. If those expenses go up, you go worse. If they go down, you get better. So there's the two sides, the revenue side and the expense side. If there's not as many pensioners on the plan, that's going to reduce expense, which will help your unfunded position. Keep in mind that when these actuaries, you know, this is the one that was done November 19th, there's a million different assumptions in here, and MERS goes through this every single year. And, you know, I don't know, I don't think they're trying to fabricate information, but when you're looking at an 8% return and the average margin at, you know, 5% to 6% in the marketplace, it just seems like 8% is a little high. And I think MERS is starting to recognize that by bringing this, bringing the investment return down.
Mr. Peacock, if you were to do one thing, other than pay more, if you were to do one thing to structurally change our position, what would your recommendation be?
I would change your multiple to 1.0, freeze the final annual compensation, and close the open plans.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I realize you just got that tonight. Again, my apologies for not getting it to you sooner, but as I mentioned, these reports just came in, the OPEB came in this afternoon, or this morning. I think Dean just got the final this morning. Take some time to read that. I can plan on being back at the next Ways and Means or at the next board meeting, whichever one you want me at. And after you've had some time to digest that, you can certainly let me know, and you can contact me anytime with questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, items removed from the consent calendar, and that would be Commissioner Klaus, item number 28.
I didn't support the agreement with the YMCA, and I don't support it now, and I just want that clear.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend to the Parks Board to enter into a contract with the YMCA for management of the Easling Pool.
Is there support?
Second.
Move by Commissioner Kropka, supported by Dr. Johnson. I will be supporting this motion. I am not going to pull the rug out from under the YMCA. The county board voted in committee to support this agreement. The Parks Board voted unanimously to support this management agreement. I am extremely skeptical as to its success. I'm not going to apologize for my skepticism. I sincerely hope that I am wrong. I have been wrong before in my lifetime, and I sincerely hope that this is one time where I will be proven wrong. Any more discussion? Dr. Johnson?
Well, you know, I've always been the one voice, well, not the only voice, but the one pushing to close it, you know? And Christine knows that we've had several discussions. You know, Matt knows how I feel. You know, and I struggle with the same questions you've brought up. You know, financially, it makes more sense to close it. But to me, that's the only option right now that we have to make this a viable facility is to let the Y give it a go. I love what Elisa said last week, that if it fails, it'll be on the Y. You know? But, and, you know, and I still struggle. I mean, you know, that was a very difficult vote for me. But they also did what I had asked, was to see if the Y could take that over and make a go at it. So I still support it. You know, I still have as many reservations, you know, last week as I do now, but I still support it, you know, because they pretty much did what I had asked as far as trying to see what we could do.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same?
No.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, Department Action Items, Health Department. Wendy.
Wendy Truitt, Health Officer, Grand Travis County Health Department. I'm here tonight following up on the community health needs assessment process that I brought to you, I think, a month ago. It's a process that health departments and hospitals go through every three years. We require it, and it's needed for our accreditation process, and we are now, we were approached by some other health systems within our region to kind of formalize a larger process that will still give us all our individual local health needs assessments, but be a little more cost-effective. There's no funding for us, so there's nothing, it's just basically looking for your support tonight. Health, or the Northern Michigan Public Health Alliance applied for a special grant. It's an Implementation Impact Grant from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. We've made it as a finalist, so this is just the next step in formalizing your support.
All right. I would move to approve the Agreement for Regional Community Health Assessment and Improvement Initiative. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Dr. Johnson. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, award for contract for preliminary design services, Boardman Lake Trail. I'm moving on to page 126. All righty. Gene and Julie?
Good evening. My name is Jean Drensey. I'm the Deputy Director of the Planning and Development Department. And before you, just as a, just a brief background, Grand Travis County was awarded a $95,000 grant from the State of Michigan Coastal Zone Management, $75,000 of which is to do preliminary design for the last two miles of the Boardman Lake Trail. And $20,000 would be going towards the water trail. The dollar-for-dollar match for the Boardman Lake Trail came from the Brownfield Authority, and the $20,000 dollar-for-dollar match came from Rotary Charities. This is a cooperative venture between the county, the city, and Garfield Township. The lead on this is TART. They will be doing the public outreach with the consultant that we select and organizing and doing the reporting of what the requirements for this. So staff time is very limited. There's no general fund dollars, and we are able to really get an economic impact on the trail that has been on the books for about 12 years. So I'd like Julie to go into a little bit more depth of who we are selecting and how we did the RFP process.
I would be happy to. Thanks, Jean. Julie Clark, I'm the Executive Director of TART Trails. I'm really pleased to be here before you this evening. It has been a great process so far, so it gives me hope on what's going to happen over the next nine months. We are working closely with the county, the township, and the city, as well as Lea. We put out an RFP a little over a month ago, and we had a really good response. Some great consultants put together some really good proposals. We brought, I believe, three of those in for interviews. And the consultant that's being put before you tonight, being recommended by the committee, is Prine Nuhoff. This is a firm out of the Grand Rapids area that has a lot of trail experience. Scott Post is the primary on this project, and he is really looked upon as an expert in trail management maintenance in the state. So we're excited. Prine Nuhoff brings with them many, many years of design experience, and what they specialize in is trail maintenance. And so we're hoping that they will give us a really good hand on how to build a great trail that provides and reflects the community values that we'll be seeking, but also can be constructed in a manner that maintenance is taken into account before, and we have a plan to pay for after. And so that's also part of this proposal, is to make sure we have a firm understanding of how much it will cost to maintain this trail, both on an annual basis and then in capital replacement. And that is why we are all sitting at the table together, the township, the county, and the city, because we recognize this is a community asset and one that has been on the books. I'm going to, I'm going to change that, Jean, longer than 12 years. We're looking at 30 years. So TART Trails is really excited to be part of this process. We're looking forward, it's a pretty accelerated timeline. This is just the preliminary design so that we have some good, solid construction figures and maintenance costs so that we, again, as a community, can have a discussion about how we'll pay for what is a very valued asset for both recreation and transportation in our region. So I've got to say, we had a really good discussion as a committee. The proposals that were brought to us by the consultants were well-done. It was a very hard choice, and we are thrilled to have had such a very difficult decision to make, and I think Prine Nuhoff will be a good addition to this project. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is there a motion?
Tom had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wasn't going to make a motion, but I...
I said you had a question.
That would set us back a few years. But I have had the pleasure of working with Julie in the Heritage Trail, linking public transit into our bike and ride system. And every project that I have been associated with, which she's been on, it's very well-done, very well-organized. She's very professional and brings a delightful sense of energy, and so you are who you hang around with. So I think by associating with her, anything that we do would be successful. So I would highly recommend supporting this.
All right.
I move that we approve to hire Prine Nuhoff for preliminary design services for West Boardman Lake Trail, and that the, yep.
Chairman, that would be me.
Chairman be authorized to enter into contract subject to approval as to substance from the county administrator and as to form by the prosecuting attorney.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Dr. Johnson, supported by Dr. Klaus. Two weeks in a row, we promoted you. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries.
Thank you. We're going to look forward to exceeding those expectations, Tom. Thanks for the kind work.
Well, you can start. I just signed the paperwork. If you want to pick it up, you're...
All right.
Oh, that's another one. All right.
Dean, you're up next.
You have your claims summary for the month of November as reviewed by your audit committee. The claims total $5,723,999.88, and I'm asking for your approval of the November claims.
Is there a motion to approve the November claims?
So moved.
Support. Moved by Dr. Johnson, supported by Commissioner Kropka. Commissioner Klaus and I sat in claims today. I've got to say something. I just have to say something. There's, there are some expenses that we can trim. You know, and I've got a couple of questions. One, human resources, Mr. Menzel, sent out, no, they have to do that by law?
No. I'm saying it was bad.
Human resources sent out for each employee?
The donuts?
No. No. Pack, packets, mailing packets.
Healthcare.
Healthcare packets at $1.67 apiece. Now, I know that $1.67 times 500, you know, I know it's not going to save the budget. I know that. You add in the $327.50 that we spent on donut holes.
I didn't know about the donuts.
For employee appreciation.
It is somewhat of a contradiction.
You know, I understand that we're doing some of this stuff because we've always done it that way, but, you know, I think employees might appreciate that $327 going towards their unfunded pension liability versus donut holes. And at some point, this commission needs to sit down, and Ron and I were sitting there this afternoon going, just kind of shaking our heads, we've got to take a look at some of this stuff. Now, it's not going to balance the budget, but, you know, $1,000 here, $1,000 there, times, you know, over the next 10 years, it adds up. It certainly does in my household, so we need to take a look at that.
And there may be a requirement to mail those.
Well, that's what I was going to look into.
I know where I work, they mail them to my house also.
There was a form that we have to sign in it, so I wanted to look into that, and that's why I didn't bring it up without asking. But I was very surprised to receive the package in the mail.
I got the package too.
I think all of us got the pa, and I understand that you need, you need to let people know. And I just feel like there may be an electronic way to do it, but it could have to do with health insurance or laws involving that.
It could very well have to do with laws.
But I was going to ask, just so you know.
But, you know, we need to start taking a look at how we do things, and...
The less we can use mail, and the more we can use electronic mail, seems to be, to make sense. But that was a frustrating thing to receive that, and then I did, you know, kind of think, well, maybe it had to do with the signature form. But perhaps those signature forms could be kept in human resources, and you could just come and sign them. I don't know.
I don't, I don't either, but Ron and I...
And did it go to retirees as well?
Ron and I were in claims committee, talking amongst ourselves, and it is an open meeting, and... And so, you know, I, I just, there are some other things that pop up in front of us, and we just need to start taking a look at some of this stuff.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think, I certainly don't disagree with you. I think that your time is not well-spent digging down. We should be doing that-
The department heads.
Through the budget process. I'm hoping next year that we will start the process. We will start it much earlier. We will go through line, item by line, item, and then we will actually do some, some coaching and some, some, some work on prioritizing and doing a much better job of it. As you mentioned, those are not our problem. They are more of a symptom of a problem, of a lack of accountability.
It's not, you know, it's not going to fix anything, but-
But it can go towards that, and if you find enough of those, and you can, can save a job, it's worthwhile doing, and I appreciate the input. But this year, you know, we've been, Dean's even going to come in Friday and work, and we're trying to get a budget completed, and because of the timeframes being so short, I haven't been here a full week yet, we're trying to get it done as best we can, but we are not drilling down as effectively as we should be. And I agree with that, and next year, we will be doing that. But we just, we just don't have the time left in the year to get a budget out and do that. So, the solutions we'll be giving you will be more across the board. I'm hoping Dean and I can complete that process next week. We then are going to recommend that we sit down with, have a session, or two-on-one, or whatever the case may be, to go through that with you before the actual 16th, so you're just not blindsided all at one evening in that, and explain it to you as best we can. But it's not a process that I approve of, but it's the only process I have available to me to meet the timelines that we're under right now.
All right. Okay, we have a motion to approve claims. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Old unfinished business, housekeeping items. Amended Resolution 135-2015, which is on page 126. Okay. Installation of governmental center generator, Advantage Electric. I'll just read it. Whereas the Ways and Means Committee met in regular session on October 21st, 2015, and reviewed recommendation of the Office of Facilities Management to accept the proposal of Advantage Electric and authorize the installation of the ASKA generator previously purchased from Graham Motor Services, and whereas request for bids was solicited with qualified responses received from two vendors, and whereas Advantage Electric submitted the lower bid, $35,500, to complete the installation and final connection of the new generator servicing the governmental center's central dispatch operations, and whereas the Ways and Means Committee concurs with this recommendation, now therefore be it resolved by this Board of Commissioners that Grand Traverse County approve entering into a contract agreement with Advantage Electric based upon acceptance of their proposal dated October 12th, 2015, and the amount of $35,500 for the installation of the ASKA generator previously purchased from Graham Motor Services. And I will be making that motion.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Max Bauer, supported by Dr. Johnson. Discussion.
I mean, this lady was just a $200 typo.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the correction to the appointment of Hospital Finance Board. And I'm looking for it. All right. This is a housekeeping matter. A move by Commissioner Kropa, seconded by Dr. Lethrup, to reappoint Dale Sterrett to the Hospital Finance Authority for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2018. I will make that motion. Is there support?
I think that was the error.
That's the wrong one.
I think it's the five-year term.
That's the wrong one? I haven't got it. Anything else?
It needs to be for a five-year term through June 30th, 2020.
Okay. For a five-year term, ending in 2020. I don't know why mine doesn't say that, but it doesn't.
I'll support.
All right. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, social media-
Actually, page 128 gave the explanation that Chris had on, on the two errors, the typos.
All righty. Yes, thank you, Bonnie.
I'm sorry, and I missed, who made the motion and seconded?
I did.
In the second?
Supported by Commissioner Kropa.
Thank you.
Social media policy.
I contacted our prosecutor about bringing this idea back up. There was an attempted fail last year of a social media policy, but I think it's important that we move forward on having one. I think it's a good tool for our department heads to help them deal with some situations with employees, and the policy that was brought up last year did not go, not originated nor go through our prosecutor's office, and he had some very legitimate concerns about it, and I remember you did as well, Christine, so here's to a second attempt that does originate from our prosecutor's office, so that we can have this discussion and hopefully create a good policy to help deal with this problem.
Bob, in your spare time, would you like your office to write one?
Well, actually, fortunately, our insurance carrier, MMRMA, has a model policy, which I've gotten typing right now and should be going out to you whenever you want to set this for-
RMNA.
-consideration.
All right. Thank you. We'll bring it to RMNA.
What's the, I guess, what's the meat of this thing, I guess?
Well, it might help to have the history part, which I don't know if Bob or Christine could be more helpful with that, where it was originated from last year.
Well, essentially, the social media policy is directed at social media posts that affect the direct business interests of the county. And so, when employees are in possession of classified or confidential information, for example, those are the types of things that should not be posted to a social media site, but they have to affect the direct business interest of the county.
So, somebody just says, "We suck," and that's still fine?
Well, you cannot infringe First Amendment.
Yeah, because I, that's, that's why I was asking. I don't want to, you know, we still, if Wendy back there wants to tell us how bad we are, we want her to be able to do that.
The MMRMA model policy-
I thought you were hiding back there.
...has been analyzed in terms of labor relations opinions that have been put out, and so, they feel confident that it meets that muster. I do have to say that, you know, applying the policy and looking at the First Amendment issues involved, I'm going to recommend that before any discipline is given out, that it go through our office, because I think we have to be very concerned about that.
We're primarily focusing on confidential information that simply should not be shared. And I can't imagine that anyone disagrees with that. All right. Moving on, new business. Life and Disability Insurance Renewal with Lincoln Financial. Mr. Menzel, I, I do have a question about this.
Uh-oh.
(laughing).
Okay. Let's see if I can respond.
All right. Aetna is a-
$5,500 cheaper.
Yeah, and it's, it's a good company.
I've heard of them. Yep.
So, why?
Well, I looked at this, and $5,500 is, you know, we're, Dean and I are looking to save everything we can, and I analyzed what it would really cost to move over to another firm. Well, in staff time, Joanne would spend 10 hours on conversion things, and Sally would be 40 hours. Two of them, there would be $1,472. In addition, I have to provide a copy of the SED and LTD plan for all the employees, 450 is paper costs, time to copy, staple, mail in our office in each mailbox.
You've done your-
And then I have to upload to the website, as the current one, that takes about 10 minutes, binder check issued through Treasury and Finance. And I have to review all plan applications and checklist. I have to scan each plan document and each employee file. That's about eight hours. I've got to communicate to the employees about the change in your carrier email or memo preparation, about 15 minutes.
Well, in the words of the late-
Transfer of current employees on disability, leave your website procedures forms.
Gilda Radner. Never mind.[1210.54][1210.54](laughing).
No, it seems to me, when I analyze all of those activities, I was going to be spending a lot more than $5,500, $5,500, and I know this group, I even called them personally-
All right.
-and tried to get the cost down.
You, I'm sold. Once you've made the sale.[1225.04][1225.04](laughing).
So, I didn't take it lightly, and I wasn't going to look $5,500, you know, I was going to save it if I could, but it would cost me more not to.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Dr. Johnson, supported by Commissioner Kropa, to renew our life and disability insurance with Lincoln Financial. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries.
It's always polite to say, and did that answer your question, I guess?[1255.16][1255.16](laughing).
When I start quoting Gilda Radner, yes, you have.[1260.04][1260.04](laughing). All right. This is our second opportunity for public comment.
George, we, we already passed that resolution, but I know you probably have more to add to that, so.
I just want to, by the look on Dr. Bob's face when I walk in, the thumbs up that you guys passed the resolution, and I want to-
We did.
I want to thank you for doing it. I was at Garfield Township tonight, and they passed it, and so, we'll work on the other townships. It seems like a positive through all the township supervisors I've talked to.
Can you give your name and address?
Oh, George Champlin. 1276 West River Road, La Clair Township, Traverse City.
All right.
Retired from the county.
Thanks for your help. You always throw in that.
So anyways, I want to thanks, thank you again for doing that. I have a question or a comment. When you talked about sending all these packages and stuff out, when I worked for the county, they used to send a lot of the stuff through inter-office mail to, like, the, the department head, or the managers, or supervisors, or whatever, and they dispersed it amongst the employees. I don't see why that wouldn't work instead of, you know-
That was my thought as well.
-to send it all through the mail.
That's too logical, George.
Yeah. Thank you.
We'll find out. Thank you, George. Any additional public comment? Mr. Roth.
Parks and Recreation, not director, I'm not the director, it's the director. I'm the Parks and Recreation President for Grand Traverse County. I just couldn't let the earlier public comment go. That was just, I can't do it. Disagree with the dollars altogether. Cherry-picking a year last year when we had a good year compared to revenues that have been falling dramatically this year, and memberships dropping. Can't put those numbers together. Yes, we didn't push the revenue portion of it, because in my eyes, there were two options: close the pool or run it with a Y. We had no revenue this coming next year. That was going to go bye-bye. There was no way to deal with that. We looked at it and tried, and I don't want to pick on Dean Bach, because you're going to hit me, and it's not Dean's fault, but the county's accounting system, most of us in business have a balance sheet. We can look at both sides and know what we're costing. When we have an allocation on top of a revenue that adds, and then we end up at $835,000, it's a little harder for simpletons like me to follow along. So, I just don't buy the numbers even close. That wasn't there. We figured, at the worst-case scenario, we're saving the county $75,000 on the pool. That's the worst-case scenario. We're looking at more, 100 grand, 100 grand on the pool alone. That's not all the other options. The other thing we wanted to talk to, and Mr. Menzel mentioned this last week when we were talking about Christine's reason for still being there. I don't think everybody remembers what we did last year. We had a Parks and Recreation Director that was making what three employees are making now. We've got three employees getting paid what the Director got paid by himself, and they were all three there the year before. So, we cut there, too. So, we've been doing a great job at cutting all along the way, and I just can't let public comments say that we are costing the taxpayers, Grand Traverse County, more money. There's no way. We did the best we could to save it, and that was it. Thank you.
Anyone else? All righty. Commissioner Comments, Reports. Commissioner Kropa.
The volunteers put in and have almost completed the new Boardman River Trail at the Nature Education Reserve. They had some really great days this fall, and they also worked in the snow last week, and it's a great team of volunteers coordinated through the Conservation District there in TART, so that's really good. I made it to Lansing yesterday. It was a little questionable, some of the driving, to serve on the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee representing you, and it was interesting, because what we did was meet with the Opiate Task Force, which is a project of our Lieutenant Governors, and it was eye-opening, to say the least, and I actually have to open up my thing. But what I was saying to Bob earlier that I found most interesting was, I am the only one north of Claire that sits on that committee, so these are all people from the downstate communities, and when they were discussing, the experts were discussing it, they brought up Grand Traverse County specifically. And many of the comments from the downstate commissioners and administrators are, "You got a real problem out there." And I thought that that was very enlightening, and I like that the media has been highlighting this problem, and I think that we need to talk about it, because a lot of times, things that we don't put in Pure Michigan commercials cost us a lot of money, and that is what it is. So, I just wanted to read just a couple of things, because they're very interesting. But this Opiate Task Force that the Lieutenant Governor is working on is combating this problem by dealing with where it starts, and that's the doctors that are prescribing drugs. And we talked about the transfer from being, getting addicted to pills to then having to use street heroin, because it's so much cheaper. And of course, it's still more expensive up here in Grand Traverse County, so the dealers love to come up here from downstate Michigan, because they can then sell it and make more, more money, but it's still less than if you're using pills. The U.S. is 5% of the world population, and we're 99.9% of the global supply of hydrocodone. And the interesting thing about Michigan that I thought was, and I was reading this to poor Ron, I love statistics, there are over 12 million prescriptions for opiates and opioids in the state of Michigan just in the last year, and that's enough for a bottle for every single person in the state of Michigan. And these bottles contain anywhere from 70 to 90 pills, and we all know that you don't need that. So, where do they, they end up on the street, and they were saying, "You can see anywhere from a dollar a pill to $15 a pill," and of course, you get higher prices for things here in Grand Traverse County. So, we're going to continue to talk about this on the judiciary circuit, and just talking about different legislative ways to, to do this. And the reason I'm saying this is not because it's, I'm sure, that exciting to you, but the dollars that the heroin epidemic costs Grand Traverse County taxpayers, I would love to know. And I was saying, I would love to talk to Bob and our sheriff and our courts and get an idea of the dollar amount that we're spending on this problem in, just in our county alone. And it was very interesting. And another, just a quick note, they mentioned Traverse City getting the grant for Narcan, and as you know, our officers and our paramedics are carrying that, and we've already had more than one life saved. One was reported in the media, but I happen to know another one, because I knew the person that was responding to the person. And, and there's, of course, a big debate about Narcan and what people think about it and, and that sort of thing. But here in, in Grand Traverse County, we have a tremendous job being done by our Sheriff's Department, by our Prosecutor's Department, in letting people know that we're not going to let this happen up here. But sadly, we seem to be losing the battle, and I think as we look at things like budget, we need to think about bigger-picture items, like what the drug war is costing us and where we're going to go from there. But worse than talking about the budget, it's talking about the lives, and we're all parents, and it was, it was a very interesting discussion to sit in on, and I'm thrilled that they have this, this Opiate Task Force. The entire state is recognizing how critical this is to us. We are number five in per capita heroin deaths in the country. That's pretty sad, when you think about it. And just one last thing, because I like to talk about unfunded mandates for everyone at the state level. There is a House Bill, 5078 to 5081, which is about paroling inmates from prison that need medical care, and I haven't had a chance to talk to you about this, but there are people that are going to, to die. But how, where it affects it is, once they parole them, then they can get Medicaid, and they're trying to work this with county medical facilities. And since we have a county medical facility, it's important to keep track on this. MAC opposes this legislation and is trying to work on having a way that county medical facilities can volunteer to house these prisoners, but that it wouldn't be forced on them. Now, I don't know the amount of prisoners that come out of Grand Traverse County that have long-term medical, I, I don't know that, but just to let you know, they're keeping an eye on it. And next Tuesday, the House Committee on Judiciary Committee will be hearing the 17-year-old juvenile reform bill, which I had talked about, and we passed a resolution against, and I did share those resolutions with our friends at MAC. Unfortunately, I'm having surgery Monday, and I'm not certain I can make it down to testify, but I'm going to try. I talked to MAC today, and they said that they would love to have somebody from Grand Traverse County there. Bob, if you would like to go down?[1603.12][1603.12](laughing) I know you're really busy, but think about it, 'cause I'm happy to help get you in, in touch with our legislative liaison, but I think somebody needs to be there, so.
Well, I know the Prosecutor's Association will probably have multiple reps.
Good. They said that it mattered to have commissioners, and it mattered to have smaller communities that will be heavily impacted by these dollar amounts. And MAC did do the, the work to get the idea of the dollar amounts, and they really are talking about a million and a half dollars a year or so for counties like ours and unfunded mandates. And the worst part is, that doesn't solve the problem of getting these people help that need help. So those are extra dollars, and then when you add on the heroin epidemic dollars, and you can start seeing where we really need to discuss this, and I was happy to see that the paper had above the fold on Sunday, a discussion on the heroin epidemic, and they had a family that recently had lost their son, and it would, it's important for us to, to talk about that. The very last thing is, MAC is now going after the 17-year-old offenses as a heavily violation, so they're working on that, and they gave us, these are draft, but little flow charts to hand to our representatives and senators to let them know how changing the age for a juvenile would affect the cost for your home community or home county. So I will be speaking to our representative and Senator about that as well.
Yeah, earlier today, I attended the Northwest Regional Airport Commission, and kinda like us, they had some unfunded pension liability. For, for there, it's only 1.9 million, but we had a little extra cash at the end of the year, so we dumped 1.5 million into it, so-
Well, good for you.
Which brought up the, obviously closed the gap greatly. One of those things that we decided to do it, whether than, rather than hold that money for some other thing, you know, at least you can do that now, and then, you know, let the market, you know, come down as it will, so we did make that action today. So they're, before the end of the year, they're gonna pay to close that gap, which is, I wish we could be, you know, wish we were able to do that, but you know, at this point, we're not, but.
Good long-term thinking.
Yeah, that was excellent move on, part of the Airport Commission. Anyone else? No closed session?
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Anyone else?
Can we go into closed session?
Oh, all right. We're done.
Dr. Ron, yeah?
Dr. Ron.
Yeah.
Well, when you got three of them.